Alright. It is awesome to see this full house here tonight, and for a good reason. So, I know there's some folks still getting their stuff organized in the back, which is fine. But let's go ahead and call the meeting board if you please call the roll. Sullivan, Mayor Brakers?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yeah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Perfect.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kozensky?
Yeah.
David Quong there. Awesome. If you can please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome everybody. This is Super Night. It is always awesome to see all the families here, all the students that have done so much, and all the folks frankly that have made this possible. And Kathy and the Education Board, just huge thank yous to all of you. Thank you. So, I think, I think I'll just turn it over to you Kathy. I think you're running the show tonight. So, thank you again, and I'll turn it over to you. Is it on?
Turn it around?
Yeah.
Can I turn it around if they see her?
Okay. Well, see, we put up these nice new screens up here so that you don't have to, but we want to speak to the audience. So I totally get it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, welcome everybody. I'm Kathy Sullivan. I'm the Chair of the Education Advisory Board. We have several members here tonight. And it's my favorite night of the year at Town Hall, my favorite meeting, as many of you know because you've been here before. Our scholarship is a wonderful thing. We're a small town, and the amount of money that we raise for, I think there's five women on this board, and they work very hard, and the kids work very hard. And we raised, Deborah, what's our total this year?
It was about fifty-three thousand dollars.
Fifty-three thousand dollars this year. The way that we do our scholarship is everyone who applies and qualifies gets a scholarship. We divide it evenly between the kids. In order to qualify, you have to give forty hours of community service directly to our town, and service in our town, and you have to live in the town. So the requirements are not difficult, but we truly believe in the concept that if you give back to your community, it teaches you to believe in your community, and that you'll continue coming back to your community. And whatever community you live in, you've learned to serve your community. And I think it's a really great concept, and I am so proud of these kids. A lot of the kids here tonight, we see year after year, because they're eligible for the scholarship until the age of twenty-five. And that means that every single year they come back and they do forty hours of community service. It's not just a one-time thing. In order to qualify, they have to do it every year. And every kid in here tonight that'll be receiving this, that's what they've done. And most of them have done more than forty hours in direct service to the town. So can we give them a hand before we get started? So what we're gonna do is we're gonna call the kids up here. Some of them were unable to make it tonight, and they either have a parent here, or they've called me and asked me to hold their certificate. So we're gonna call you up. When I call you up, please come up. We're going to, Bob, will you take pictures? Bob, we'll take our picture, and then please stay up here because I'd like a picture with the Ed Board and with the council afterwards, if you don't mind. So when you come get your certificate, just stay up here, please. Okay, our first recipient is Michaela Freeman. She stayed at work and was unable to make it tonight. And when I call these off, if I don't say your last name, it's probably because I can't pronounce it or something, so bear with me. Brandon Harmer. Thank you. And what, you wanna tell what year Brandon's in? What are you studying?
Brandon's in engineering, and he's working for Lockheed Martin right now. Yeah, so he's working his way up right now, working at home, and also working at the office. And they're feeding him so well. He's getting breakfast and lunch, so he's super happy. And it's his second year right now.
Perfect. Thank you. Christina Harrington. And I think, and her brother, Michael Harrington, is also a recipient, and he's accepting for her. There's both of them. Thank you, sir. And just stay up here, please. Jessica Hartman. These things are not in the right order. Thank you. That's your daughter? Do you want a separate picture? Without my hip, okay? Caleb Hobson Garcia. His parents will accept tonight. You have a picture for him?
You're welcome.
Okay. It's okay. Thank you, thank you. And you don't have to have your picture with me. Cassandra. You have to have your picture with me. Thank you. We'll do it again. Oh, come here, your mommy's another one. Jenna Kipple. Congratulations. We'll get it. Welcome. Megan Laffey. Hi, honey. Glasses off, glasses on. Isabel and Melanie Martinez. There you go. You wanna take your other child? Caitlin? I don't think I've done enough of that thing, Robby. Stay up here. Robert Mercer, I think he's unable to attend, but his mom's here, yes. Thank you. You have a picture for him if you want. Thank you. Congratulations. Gabby Morales, and she's unable to attend tonight, but, and Joshun Preet, but he's unable to attend tonight also. Madison Sullivan. You could say. Tyler Paparowski. And you have to take a picture with me too. Ricky Velazquez is unable to attend. And Ryan Williams. Awesome, thank you. So if we could get all the board members to come up, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a picture with the board members. Paeans, take your time. And we're gonna take a picture with the council. And then for all the paeans and students that are here for the scholarship, you can leave. You don't have to stay for the meeting. It's okay. You're welcome though, but you can leave and it won't be weird. And I have a check here that we'll take pictures with outside, so if you wanna stay for that.
If you guys would come together, send maybe sideways, forty-five degree angle type thing.
So,
I'll just commit a little bit, Kathy, find your spot.
I think they want more of that.
With us.
Wait, he's done? Yeah, come here.
Alright, look this way. Bob, will you get your scholarship certificate right side up? Everybody looks good. Open it up if you have.
Bob, are we out of the picture?
Uh, yeah, you're out of the picture. I can photo shoot you out. This is mine, guys. Look this way. Alright, if the council jump in.
Jump, man. I walk in, I ain't jumping. No, I ain't having it. We're walking here, we're doing it.
Make sure it's true.
Alright, here we go.
Alright, very good. Congratulations, kids. You did a great job.
Alright.
Um, the office has a check outside, and he wants to take a picture of his family.
And before you all leave, I just wanted to say, just say a couple more things. I just wanna say a couple, a couple more things. You know, the Board does an amazing job, and Kathy, your leadership on that board is so appreciated. But I know the entire board puts in so many extra hours, so much extra time to get this, to all come together. The students, you know, I read through, as I'm sure that all the council did, I read through all the essays. What an awesome testimony, not only to the town that they grew up in, but the future of this town that is spelled out in those essays. It's truly, it's awesome. And we are blessed to have these individuals in our town. And I also just wanna do a shout out to Deborah. I know she does an amazing job to support and do everything for them. And then finally, I just, all the residents participate. You don't get fifty-three thousand dollars, you know, from one individual. You get it from a community. And this community has really supported this effort and done an amazing job of realizing just how special our students are and supporting it. So awesome job to everybody. Thank you for all that you've done, and congratulations. Okay, now y'all, you're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to go. We'll take a two-minute, two-minute break here. Alright, welcome back again. You know, that is an awesome, I love that presentation every year. It's really awesome. So, it's wonderful. Alright, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? I've received best for two cards. The first person is Kirk Hobson Garcia, followed by Anna Kolbus. You wanna speak on something else? Reverse order. Oh, the reverse order. Okay, Anna Kolbus, followed by Kirk Hobson Garcia. How's that?
Hi, Anna. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Anna. Hello.
Awesome presentation a few minutes ago, and thank you, there's Bob, thanks Bob, for letting me know about the scholarship a couple of years ago. And now to hear that you can be twenty-five years old, and Caleb's about to start his master's program in about a year and a half. So we weren't even aware it continued past undergrad. It's great, everybody pulling together. So anyway, so my name is Anna Kolbus. I live at sixteen-two-oh-one Sterling Road. Normally, I'm talking about things such as flooding and trash and speeding. But tonight, I wanted to take my two minutes and twenty-five seconds to give testimony about my wonderful neighbors Steve and Laura Garate. They are right in from one-sixty-second Avenue, just north of us. They have four neighbors around them, including us. We're all close. We all get together. We have no issues together. He also, just to give you a couple of examples of the things he's done over the last few years, at his own cost, with his own equipment and his own labor. When Mrs. Chapels was under the weather at Dykes and Sterling, he cleaned up all of her trash, disposed of it. Now the neighbors take turns walking around and bagging all the trash. Because frankly, it's not her trash, it's not our trash. It's people who drive by. And normally, the town would take care of that, but we're taking care of it. He has helped extensively during hurricanes. I really can't say enough about him. So I'm here because he's in the middle of quite a large fund. And I'm not an attorney, and I'm not presenting myself as an attorney. But with the knowledge that I have, it does seem like disparate treatment. So on his behalf, we have an attorney that we consult with from time to time, who will be doing a request for information. And we just wanna see why he's being treated so differently. And we wanna look at the history of other complaints and see if it went that far. We don't know who complained about him. And what really put me over the edge, and anyone that knows these boards I'm on with my fifty-five seconds, when I get upset, you know it, I don't sleep, it's just very hard. And ever since I caught wind of what was going on with him, it's all I could think of, and I've been doing quite a bit of research. I was in a neighborhood meeting about a week ago, and someone on that meeting, although we managed to, started talking about her fear that people would come in from outside of the community and set our homes on fire. That was said in the meeting. So I just wanna say, I'm not afraid of our town doing that. But I actually am afraid of what happened to this neighbor. It's not right. Someone came to his house to actually want to look into his refrigerator and determine if he was even still living there. He's been there fifteen years. It is completely out of hand. I spent about thirty-six hours writing something on Facebook, deleted it, said that's not my style. I have one second left. I'm not a social media person. I'm a face-to-face kind of person. That's why I didn't send the email that I sent. That's why I'm here, taking my time to come see you in person. It's horrible, and I really compel you to look at it. We have a legal department here that maybe needs a little shakeup. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna also say that, you don't feel like you are limited by the clock. Like, dude, I'm just trying to keep, you know, I'm going crazy, but I wanna hear what you have to say.
I would, I would like our contract for legal services to go out in the public and see what we can do. And I would like a closer look at, you know, I hear in all the committees that I'm on, that we're reactive, not a proactive in terms of going out and citing people, that you need people to call in and complain, and that's one of the beautiful things about the town. We're not an HOA with a gate and eighty million rules. We have property rights. We like, we like to live free and peacefully. And so if no one's complaining about this guy, he doesn't even have a neighbor directly across the street from him. It's Mrs. Chapels Woods that he cleaned up. And I just don't get it. I don't understand why he is being singled out. It sounds like a power trip. Some of us speak a little more politely or whatever than others, but that doesn't give you the right to exercise disparate treatment. And I'd really like you to take a look at what's going on in the legal department, and what's going on in, I'm kind of losing the words for that department. And, you know, I don't want that money. I'd rather flock a bunch of neighbors again than have, have that twenty grand or thirty grand go into our coffers here at the town. I think it's dirty money. I don't think it should be taken. I don't think it should be used. And I would much rather continue to participate in fundraisers, up to and including giving Caleb's money back to you guys if it offsets his bill. We are furious, everyone around him. We're furious. We're disgusted. And it's not representative of our council, which is the only reason I took my time to come talk to you. Because this isn't what you preach. This isn't what you do. It's not you. It's not our town. And, you know, I've been living here since two thousand and three, and this is the first time I've ever had to come up and say something like this, which says a lot about our town, but it's wrong. And I hope you agree with me that it's wrong, and I hope you do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Evening, council members. My name is Kirk Hobson Garcia. I live at one-sixty-two-oh-one Sterling Road. Anna's husband, and this is the first time I've come to speak to you all. I like what you're doing. I enjoy reading your newsletter. I learn so much about each of you all from it. But when I heard what is happening to Steve, because he and I go out and we walk this way and we pick up trash, we all talk. All talk is a term from my country. It just means to go outside and speak, you know, anything, right? And I'm upset about it. And I would like you all to truly look at what is happening to him. Maybe he did do something incorrect, and he should, you know, have a fine for it. But it doesn't have to be what is being requested. Please revisit this topic. Please do something about it. Please be reasonable. We all want to be reasonable. Put yourself in his shoes. How would you feel if this was happening to you? I always put myself in the other person's shoes and say, how would I feel? How would this affect me? How would it affect my family? How would it affect what I think of myself? I don't like what I'm seeing, and I would like you all to do what you all always do, the right thing. So thank you again for this time, and thank you for the scholarship for Caleb. And I will veto what Anna says. If it would help to reduce his costs, we will gladly give back the scholarship. And we will tell Caleb why, and I'm sure that our son would also say, Dad, if it's for Stephen, please go ahead, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Another public comment. Thank you. Alright. Alright, board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Council member comments? Hello. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'll be rather brief. I have a few things to pass on. Just for the record, we have our tenth annual photo contest coming up. The photos need to be submitted no later than September fifth of this year. And it's Fun in the Ranches is the theme. Just wanna make sure everybody does that, knows about that. We have our Flowmobile here on the twenty-seventh. You need to make an appointment with Deborah to utilize their services. The Broward County Property Appraiser is gonna be here on the twenty-first of July. If you have any questions regarding homestead exemption, ag, whatever, what have you. Last meeting I had brought up for consideration, thinking about being proactive on the noise ordinance. Andy, since a lot of wheels started turning in Andy's head since I mentioned that, and I think he's come up with a viable solution that we may not have to go that, to that length. And he's gonna bring it up in administrative comments. Right. So, so I look forward to, I've already heard some of it, so I look forward to having him pass that on, you know, as far as that goes. And funny story happened on the way to the woods. Yeah. I thought I'll share this with everybody. I was out in western Tennessee stalking a herd of deer with a camera. Not a rifle, no, that's hard to believe, but with a camera. And then I got a weird phone call in the middle of the woods, and it was from Danny Perdilla, my opponent in the upcoming election. And he called me to let me know that he was dropping out of the race due to some legal concerns and whatnot. And he said he wanted to hear it from me. He wanted to hear it from himself, you know, before anybody, anything went crazy. Right. And to know that it was true or anything like that, because apparently there was a lot going on that day. And I just wanna thank Mr. Perdilla for being a real stand-up guy. He made it a priority to call me first, and I've got a meeting set up with him with some concerns that he has that we wanna go over. So, Mr. Perdilla, I really, I really thank you for, for doing that. And then while I was trying to find the deer, my phone blew up for the next two hours, and that was the end of that photo session. So, and to put the cherry on the icing, I went back and told my wife who was the treasurer, and her expression was, so? Actually, she was happy. She was just trying to, just playing with me, you know, as far as that goes. But, so anyway, it was, but, so, so it, it was good news, good news for me, obviously, you know, and, Congratulations, Karen. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll end, I'll end with that. That's all I have for tonight. Good, good. We'll have to go next. I'll be real quick. Okay.
So here at council meetings and as well in the town newsletter, I have really talked up the Davy PD Extra Watch Program. The mayor's used it, a number of us have used it, and I just wanna give you an update. So we went on a cruise vacation, and we were gone for about two weeks. And, you know, we've got critters and livestock and all that sort of thing, so we had to have somebody come out and take care of them. I got my daily email from Davy PD saying they'd stop by my house and no issues, and that's new. They hadn't done that in the past. And on my surveillance, there's Officer Law, there's a different person on every shift, but they're there at least once or twice a day. Well, they definitely are thorough, because about a week into vacation, my daughter was our emergency contact. You have to provide them some information on local contacts, cars in the driveway, et cetera. They called my daughter, Davy PD called my daughter, saying one of the doors was open. Just happened that the person who takes care of the house while we're gone forgot to lock it. They opened it. The alarm went off. The police were there immediately. And no issue. I mean, they waited around until my daughter could get there to reset the alarm, lock the door, and everything else. So, I mean, we've had services like this in the past. We've also hired companies in the past before this service was available to us from Davy. And this has been phenomenal. You know, we had a house watch service twenty years ago that I don't know what they did, but, you know, I know what Davy does. Every time they stop by, like I said, I get an email, et cetera. So we're very thorough about it. So I wanted to bring that up and highlight that because it's a free service. And it's not necessarily just, you know, if you're gonna go away for a week or something. It's minimum two nights. I think the max is two weeks.
Two weeks.
So those are pretty decent parameters for my lifestyle. The other part of it is, and I just saw this recently, is it's more than just a vacation watch service. If you have an issue that you're concerned about, you can sign up for the same service. They're gonna drop by your house once or twice a day. You know, if you've got concerns with crime or an issue in your neighborhood, they work that service the same way as if they were just coming out to check your house while you're on vacation. So look into it if you need it. It's a, it's a wonderful service. Something else I wrote about a while ago was Jim had put together, as I'm sure everybody's aware, the Public Safety Committee, which met for, what, six months? And one of the very last meetings, the Davy PD came out to talk about what they see as some of the challenges in town. I mean, why not go right to the horse's mouth? Well, the funny thing was, they brought up that one issue they have in our town is, from time to time, they have to chase down horses. They chase down all kinds of livestock. You know, if it's a big old bull, they're not going to get involved. They'll call the town's contractor that goes out and takes care of that. But if it's a horse, they deal with it all the time. The challenge we have in our town is they don't have any equipment that they can use here. They have to call somebody who's gonna run downtown Davy, which is a couple of miles from here, grab a halter, throw it in the back of their vehicle, or if somebody's got it, they've gotta bring it in. So I put the call out, and I don't think we've gotten anything from it. We did one, two? Two, okay. So I'll still keep the call out, because if each one, and I think, what do we have, a total of six vehicles generally in rotation?
We got fourteen officers.
Fourteen. Well, if we could have fourteen halters, that'd be great, but if we had seven, that would make sure we've got one on each one of the shifts. Because they can easily, they're all trained, they're all used to working with horses. All of them come out of Davy before they come here. And, you know, Davy's got similar issues that we have. So if you have a working halter, a working lead that you can donate, And you know, Davy's got similar issues that we have, so if you have a working uh halter, a working lead that you can donate to the town. Bring it on down to Town Hall, uh like I said, if we can have seven of them, then we've got at least one with each pair of cops, so it would be very helpful. Uh last thing, I have an announcement to make. I have uh one of those things that I think anybody who's over fifty loves to hear, no, my wife's not pregnant, but my daughter is. We have a daughter due, I I mean, I'm like, I can't even get the words out, my daughter's due on December the fifteenth, and they had a reveal party, new thing to me. A reveal party on Sunday, and we're gonna have a brand-new baby boy on around December the fifteenth, so. So that's all I have, Mayor, I'll have more next time, I can't top that, Bob, can't top that.
I will, alright, thanks David, congratulations, we're just satgating you. Yeah, I'm honored, alright, that's cool. Uh congratulations, Gary, congratulations, Gary, and um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good job. Now, yeah, uh the Vacation Watch, I took uh full um use of that as well. And um I guess it was June thirtieth, July first, second, I came back on the fourth. And and one of the things that I've always told my neighbors and residents is that. You call me, you send me a text, I'll respond twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I don't care if I'm on vacation. Cause I I still, it just because I'm out of town doesn't mean I take off my coat, then I'm no longer council member. And July thirtieth, July second, uh uh June thirtieth I left, July first, second, third. I'm getting text messages and phone calls about a big problem that was going on in, for the most part, Sunshine Ranches. They have to be dealing with loud fireworks. Not just the little ones, like the little bottle rockets that go off, they're nothing. These are the ones that are really loud, that you would have to go to Pembroke Pines to watch them launch, these are the commercial grade. And I had, when I returned on the fourth, I was walking my animals, and it was just getting dusk. And these fireworks were so loud that it, my house was shattered, it was shaking. These were loud fireworks. And uh maybe they were calling me uh about some of the problems with their horses in our town. And our town is is founded on the equestrian lifestyle, the rural lifestyle. And it's founded on the horses so much that the horse is the biggest animal on the logo. And during that time, during that weekend, in Sunshine Ranches. Melina Kaybird called me about two horses that were, that sustained injuries because they were scared. In their, in their stalls. Um Robin Bitzian, the one behind her home, horse sustaining injury. And Kirsten, whose stables that are caddie cornered to the U gas station and volunteer, they had a horse that had a heart attack. Because of these, because of these fireworks. Last year, we were um, I guess when we were first uh when the council was starting. One of our first acts were dealing with fire fireworks, and that was an issue that was brought up by Sunshine Ranches Home and Resociation. They brought up the issue that the town of Wellington was given an exemption to the statewide law that allows fireworks on three days. July first, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. And instead of the fireworks, the weekend was flat illegal. And I I I'm just really stunned that I was getting these phone calls, and I kept saying, telling people, I gave you a number, a positive number for making uh reports. And others have reports made. But I think um we need to um move forward with another ordinance to ask uh legislators in Tallahassee. To um give us this, this uh rule that we can be exempt from that same state law. And I'd like to float that out to some of the council members, and I'm seeing what your thoughts are about this.
Yeah, I I mean, I'll I'll jump in there, so um I I couldn't agree more with what you're saying, David. And I think that um there's a couple of things uh that we we did try and get this ordinance in the last uh session of the state legislature. Um we were not be able to, we were not able to get any traction on it all, because um the chairman of the committee that was in charge of it uh just denied it, frankly. And I give Robin a lot of credit, she, you know, she tried to twist some arms there to get it done, and it just wasn't happening, so. Um the good news is that uh the committee has a different chair this coming year, so I think that is something that'll work in our favor. Um I think that uh we should pursue um two avenues there. One is to try and revisit exactly what we tried to do last year. Um and if we're feeling like that's not gonna happen, one of the issues that the chair said was that, listen, she's being flooded with requests from a number of different. Cities and towns in Florida that want the same thing, and she just wasn't gonna have her committee, you know, be overwhelmed by that. So so then another alternative is to come up with a more um inclusive uh type of legislation that does the same thing. It's not specific for southwest ranches, but that we can partner with these other uh towns and cities, and um and they can be included, we can all get the benefit at once. So we're gonna take a look at both of those for next year, but David, you're you're right on, um it it has been a real problem. Um one of the things also um I was talking to Andy about was that I think, you know, it was interesting, I also got a ton of calls. Um and and it was interesting to talk to individuals and see how they um dealt with the issue. And um we got some pretty creative folks out there, and I thought that maybe next year in December. Um it would be great if we could just get rid of it all, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not going against that. Um but but it's 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 a very difficult thing to control. And so the thought is, is maybe to get a veterinarian in here, um get some some of our locals that have some ideas on how to keep the animals calmer. How to help them, the animals transition through this time of year. Um and and kind of approach it more as a community, where we all have a lot of experience in it, and have different ways, and maybe we can share some of those. And um and and try and and work together to minimize the impact of it, while we try and get uh Tallahassee to help us out, so. But I think you're right on target, David, I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts?
Yeah, I I basically would just echo what you're saying, that's, you know, we went up there, we tried, and because of the complexity of it. And with all the other municipalities that were like piling on.
Right.
You know, the committee just kind of said, nope, we're not, we're not doing anything, you know, so we'll try it again, you know, and keep trying until we get it.
Yeah, I like both ideas, I like trying to help out the community with some tips and ideas.
Yeah.
On on how to deal with it, because we got home on the fourth at about two o'clock in the morning, and the dog normally comes out and lays its tail, it was freaked out.
Yeah.
Chickens didn't lay for three days after, and it was the crazy part, I, you know, it's legal for the three days. We had fireworks going on till last weekend.
I know.
So, you know.
Crazy.
But I think partnering with some of the other cities might have some, some force behind it.
Yeah.
To get the job done, you can't ignore all of them if we're all coming out with the same concern. So however we can do that, I'm all for it, and help out any way I can.
Awesome.
Steve, with the Board League of Cities as a group, a big giant group, would that be any influence at all as a Board League of Cities, I mean?
I think it would, I think it would, but I think that it's it's a uh, it's a unique, you know, we're a unique town. And I don't think, I'm not sure that a city like Fort Lauderdale or, you know, wouldn't, that's not, that's not gonna be their thing. So we just need to find like-minded um uh communities and um band together for those folks that are passionate about it.
If I may continue, one of my, one of my thoughts are that um since it's kind of an in-vogue term. Um I I was hoping that maybe we can do something like a trigger ordinance, that if the legislature uh allows us to go forward. But it it, the day that the legislature's act uh becomes effective, the town's ordinance would become effective. And thus, we wouldn't have to wait um through more of these designated days. That um and and we continue to get these uh phone calls. So that's just some thoughts that I um I wanted to explore. Um second issue, um there's been some discussion about this uh development of the thirty acres, just to the um rest of us. I just wanna let everybody know that um while I can't say this is how I'm gonna vote, you know, if and when it comes up, something comes up. Um the opinions of Sunshine Ranches Home and Resociation, and those immediately affected neighbors will be weighing very, very, very heavily on me. So um that's where I'm gonna just throw it out there, that our opinions will be weighing uh very heavily on my decision. And then last, I I still wanna push this election sign ordinance. I I think that um we need to move forward and amend the election signs uh ordinance to um as what we were discussing during the last meeting. That kind of wraps it up.
Sure, just to comment on that, Legal has drafted it, Keith's doing a final review, and then we should have something for uh to look at next week.
Perfect.
Can you elaborate a little further for those of us who weren't here?
Oh, you were here, yeah, okay. Um basically, the the concept that I envisioned envisioned is if there's an occupied residence. There's no form filled out, anything like that, because if a person walks out and sees a sign on their property, they don't like the sign, they'll throw it away. Uh I mean, you know, um I'm not going to sit there and uh and I'm not gonna let somebody's sign be in front of my property that I don't support.
Right.
Um now, what I did found, the uh greatest concern, it had to do with vacant homes and vacant property. Because those two items, or those two parcels, the owners may not even live in Florida. They don't know what kind of signs are on their property, so I think that they should get an owner's consent in in those situations. And then the other one that I had wanted is, the day after the primary election sign signs for our town, municipal elections. We should be able to put signs out for the candidates at that time.
That move it up by, what, two, three weeks?
Probably.
Good, thank you.
That does it.
Good stuff, thank you, David. Jim? Steve, I I got five quick things, and then thank you for this evening, welcome back, uh travelers, uh you look healthy and and rested and, you know, so. I'm I'm glad to see you back, really, all of you, I mean, you know, they're not carrying the ship by themselves down here, that's terrible, guys. I don't care. Uh real quick, the Green Meadows, I guess most of you know, Green Meadows has had a lot of drainage projects that have taken place over the past couple of years. Uh a lot of those are winding down, I know there's still a lot of problems with some of the driveways that haven't been fixed. But uh they they are starting to wrap that up on one sixty-second, one sixty-third, one sixty-fourth. There is a piece that's coming in real soon to connect those three or four together, there's a piece of pipe that didn't get put in, and it's getting put in, so. I think the Green Meadows, once these projects are done, giving the first areas in southwest ranches, that'll be well drained when the rains come, so I'm looking forward to that. Another thing, the American Rescue Plan uh gave many, you know, all of the United States in different places, and we got our share of that. And we prioritize some of the things that we'd like to spend money on, you know. Uh when I was in emergency operations, and I know you've heard Andy speak about this a number of times. That's a place where we can go if there's a natural disaster, somewhere where if this place here is shut down, it's a for- uh a secure facility. Uh I'm not saying hurricane-proof, but hur- really hurricane-resistant, that we could set up shop and run the town until everything else could get back in order. And that's at the top of that list, and and I absolutely agree with that, I think that's one of the most important things that we could do. Along with that, that would be where the fire station would be, and that's out west, out towards the Country Estates area. You know, gotta purchase the land and design it, all of that's uh uh all incorporated. And on top of that list also, they were gonna put some restrooms, they'd like to put restrooms at the Meadows and Sanctuary on Griffin and and Dykes. I think that'd be wonderful, instead of the outhouses that were there, both for the farmers market and for the um fair that took place. Could imagine a a actual bathroom facilities like at the Equestrian Park, uh at Country Estate Park, I think that'd be great. And then we're looking uh currently to design a new sign to go up out front. There'll be, I think there'll be two signs, one on each side, that says that it's the Southwest Meadows Park, isn't it? Preserve, Southwest Meadows Preserve. Thank you, I'll get it right in a minute, alright? And then with those projects being done, uh Green Meadows will get moved up the list on the Tisdale project, and that Tisdale project is the repaving of new roads. So uh I would say in the next year, year and a half, maybe two years at the most, Green Meadows might only be the first one with a great drainage, but they'll have our new roads. So I'm really looking forward to that. Um the Real Arts Board has asked the residents in in the beyond, and if you have any questions, you know, you can call uh Susan. Or you can call my wife, she'll be happy to talk about it. They're looking to sign a town flag. Uh submit your ideas and stuff to the Arts Board, and you know, we need a flag, we need a town flag, something that's simple that that says Southwest Ranches. So that's one of the ideas that they're coming up with. And then lastly, we are trying to rejuvenate the Civic Association in District Three, Green Meadows, Dean's Ranches, Island Hill Estates, that area. There, we've had three meetings already, they've been well attended. And uh we have one coming up on the twenty-fifth of this month at seven o'clock. If you're interested, get in touch with me, I'd be happy to send you that Zoom meeting, so you can sit in and see what we're talking about. Uh thank uh Miss Debbie for her participation in it. Uh the residents in Green Meadows really enjoyed hearing from another president of an organization, and what all they do. And and seemed to kind of perk the people up that they were interested. We uh we don't have a place to meet, we're still doing Zoom, but I do have two opportunities, I have a church at the end of my block, a small church at the end. And then we have the Seek organization, that if we become an organization, and if it if it takes off and it and grows. Then maybe one of those two facilities, we could meet in person and not have the Zoom meetings, and I think it'd be a great thing. So if you're interested, get in touch with me, be happy to give you that Zoom meeting uh information, so you can get on board. And like I said, it's the last Monday of July.
Can I just ask a question of Andy? Andy, um I think we probably will all want to, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council, you shouldn't, but we'd all wanna probably attend these. And give whatever kind of support we can as the council. So I don't know if that's something that you can work with Jim on about publicly noticing.
Absolutely, we we do that now for the other HLA meetings that you all already attend, the in-person meetings, and and even Sunshine Ranches, which which has been over Zoom. So if you're gonna uh continue uh to, let's say, expand the council presence at those meetings, we'll just add that to our list, and we'll notice them such that your uh sunshine law protects.
Thank you.
I'd be honored, thank you so much, I mean, it'd be great to hear the residents hear from the other council, that'd be wonderful. I I'd, like I said, it just got started small, I think we had five or six to first, it grew up to about ten, I think we maybe had, Andy, probably seventeen at the last meeting, I think somewhere around here. So it's growing, and and uh you know, the word's getting out, so I'm very happy. I would love for the council to attend, I'd I'd be honored, thank you.
Anyway.
Jeff, send us a Zoom invite. Yes, I'll do that, absolutely, yeah. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Jim. All right, as always, you all have done an amazing job of covering uh virtually all the topics I was gonna touch on, so save a little time here. There was one other topic I uh has happened uh over the last couple of weeks, and I did wanna touch on that. Um we have had a uh a property on our road, but I get these calls. Uh you know, this is, I I I get these calls, um certainly not every week, but on a regular basis. And it's it's an Airbnb, um but it is mostly daily rentals. Um a lot of parties, uh things like that, it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not a vacation home. Um and uh and so in the past uh week or so, I think it was a week or two ago. Um uh the the party there was was totally out of control. Um there was, they were obviously, they were they were paying to get in, there were literally hundreds of people there, underage drinking. Um just a total, total disaster. Um fortunately, the neighbors there, the residents there called Davy PD, uh they came out, they shut it down. Um there was actually one of the security guards that uh had issues and was duly taken into custody. And um and then there was another individual there that had to be transported medically to uh to the hospital. Because she uh was in not good condition. Total disaster. You know, I'm I'm thankful, I'm thankful for Davy PD and what they did. Um I'm looking forward to, Code has gotten involved, and I'm looking forward to uh seeing the results of that. I think they've got a very strong case. Um what I wanna say to those folks that are doing that uh that type of business, is don't do it in the ranches, you're not welcome here. Understand me? It's not welcome in our town. We're a residential town, we're we're a rural community, and these types of pay-for-parties are not welcome here. And and I'm here to tell you that if you try and mirror. And, and I'm here to tell you that if you try and mirror this, you will get in some situation that these folks are in, facing no less than a ten thousand dollar fine, and you better believe I'm gonna be pushing as hard as I can to get that full ten thousand dollar fine to be levied against them. Um, this is not our lifestyle, this is not who we are, you know? If you wanna come, and you wanna live, and you wanna participate, and you wanna a rural lifestyle, you're welcome, we'd love to have you here. If you wanna open up a business and disrupt our lifestyle, I'm sorry, you're not welcome. I'm sorry. You're just a property owner that's abusing our, our, um, our rural lifestyle for your own financial benefits, and, uh, and it's not what we're about. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be watching this case very closely, um, I'm gonna be, uh, um, sure it's publicized, and the results are out there, because I want the other businesses that are doing this, and that's what it is, it's a business. It's a business in our residential and rural communities. And, um, and we, we do zoning to keep businesses out of there, okay? I'm not talking about ag, ag is a totally different thing, you know? Ag is who we are, ag is how we grow up, grew up as a town, um, there's certainly, they, they, they built this town, they're, they're, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about commercial businesses that, um, that are turning certain residential areas into, um, commercial zones. Uh, our zoning should keep it out, but unfortunately, um, Tallahassee has given these guys the grace that we can do very little unless they break some other rules, which these guys, uh, broke a bunch of them. And, um, so we're definitely gonna take action on them. Um, you know, I, I, just as a side note, um, we were fortunate to live in the state of Florida, it's a wonderful state, I love this state, I've been here, um, ever since my, my adult years, um, I love it here. But, uh, um, and we have some great representatives in Tallahassee. Um, but more and more, Tallahassee is taking away, we've seen the fireworks, we've seen it in, uh, in the Airbnbs, we've seen it, um, it could happen with septic tanks, it could happen with all kinds of things that you may or may not know about, that, um, are coming down, that are taking away our home rule, piece by piece by piece. And, um, and it's disappointing, frankly, because nobody knows better than you all and how you've elected us up here, um, how to represent and to what's best for our town. Certainly a lot better than, you know, folks up in Tallahassee. And, um, so, so this is just another example of it, um, I want folks to know that we're gonna be fighting it. Um, uh, uh, we're gonna push this thing to the limit, um, because these folks have been written up before, this is not the first time this has occurred, and, um, uh, it's just not right, it's not right for our town. So, uh, we'll keep, we'll keep you all informed, and we're gonna get that word out on it.
If I could just add to your comments on this whole thing, I had a conversation with the person who sent us all the letter, and, um, it's pretty short-sighted to try to make ten or fifteen thousand dollars on a party. I guess if you recall, there was a fatality with two drunk people running an ATC aside by side, one rode, one died. Well, the person who, the victim, the pa- the family of the victim went after everybody they could to try to collect on their son's death, they were suing everybody. Now, if somebody leaves a party where you're feeding children alcohol, and one of those vehicles goes into the canal, don't you think they're gonna come after the person who, who held the party, who owns the property?
Right.
It's just not worth it, it's just not worth it. Not to mention, it's, it's horrible for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'll piggyback on it real quick, I have an Airbnb down the street, it's not within near shot of me, it's a good half mile, three quarters mile away, but I have asked the neighbors, and, and I ask everyone out there, if you're involved along that, pick up the phone, make the phone call, don't be afraid to pick up the phone. If you don't wanna be reported, call me and I'll report the damn thing. But don't let it go unreported, the more it gets reported, the more we have to go against the owner. So just please pick up the phone and make that phone call, mm?
Absolutely, absolutely. And you bring up another point that, uh, I meant to mention, and I mentioned and I didn't. There are also a number of homes, a lot of homes here where people live here, they're our neighbors, they do good things, um, and they may go on vacation and put their house up on Airbnb for a week, and somebody else will come in there, and that's not what I'm talking about either. I'm talking about the people that buy these properties specifically to rent out, they're renting out all the time, they never spend time here, and they're renting out all the time, um, a lot of times for just one-night parties, so. Alright, I feel better that I got that. That really pissed me off, sorry.
Sorry, you did great.
Yeah. Alright, so, um, we do comments?
No comments tonight.
Alright, thank you.
And then, let me show comments.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, I do have a few things this evening. First of all, welcome back. It's been a long time since we've had full council up here, it's nice to see you all here for a meeting. Uh, some of the agendas have been a little light, uh, because there's items we couldn't bring forward, that'll no longer be the case going forward, and I'll just let you know now, the, the meeting could end July. We'll have a full slate for you. We'll be sending our preliminary budget numbers, we hope to have a new solid waste contract in front of you, we got some, some good things going on, so that we'll have it at that, uh, the July twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, second comment, the Vice Mayor was talking about noise infractions, and, and as, as you all know, our noise ordinance is not subject to time of day, it's subject to the amount of, the amount of noise, the volume. Uh, you can make all the noise you want to on your property, just stop it at the edge of your property, don't bother your neighbors. And, and so, we've had some issues, we've had some people who were, I'll say, slow learners, knew the code, code process in the beginning, and we got to a period where, where PD would go out, and they would ask people to turn the noise down, and they would. The problem became those very same people the next day, the next weekend, the next, you know, the next month are turning it up again. So we, we've instituted a new policy with, with DAVY PD, and they've been very cooperative, they've done a great job with this. If there's a noise complaint, they document it. Even if the volume is turned down, if they comply, which is fine, because it's what we want, is compliance. But if they comply and turn it down, we now have a record that's forwarded to code enforcement, and they're tracking, so that those very same people understand that if they do it again, and they're bothering their neighbors, they're gonna be cited. And, and so, we're starting to see less noise complaints, we're starting to get some compliance on that, so. In, in response with the, you know, Vice Mayor saying about being a little bit more proactive, that's, that's worked out really well for us so far. And, uh, you know, you guys get the weekly reports that I send out to you, and very often, you'll, you'll, you'll see a noise complaint that's been responded to, and, and that all goes through the L O to track, so Code is keeping track of that, and they're doing a real good job. So. So far, so good on that, we'll continue, but obviously, we'll continue to monitor that. Uh, the next thing I wanted to touch on was, during your individual one-on-one briefings, one of the things that we touched on was potentially imposing some impact fees for new construction, not on residents, not longstanding residents, but new construction, new development town. Currently, we have a, we have a parks impact fee, that's the only one we have, uh, but it's twenty years old, it was adopted from Broward County back when we became a town, that is the impact fee that we have. Uh, Russell has done some, some good work, which has been shared with you on neighboring municipalities, other municipalities, on different impact fees that they charge, because, you know, if you get a Toll Brothers, a CC Homes, something like that, that does some development in the area, building new homes, there's an impact on our community. There's increased demand on parks, there's an increased demand on roads, there's an increased demand for public safety. So there, there are various and sundry demands for service that costs us as a municipality to provide. And the impact fees are one way to offset some of that, and, and charge for that as, as part of that new development. And I, I'll just say to you all now, publicly, you were all receptive to that, or at least exploring it further in those one-on-one discussions, but I do wanna publicly share this and ask for your consensus for us to look forward, uh, work forward, uh, to continue, to, excuse me, to continue to flesh that out and, and build that out. So I just, I just wanna make sure the council's okay with us, uh, continuing to do so and explore that.
Yeah, is there any?
Yes, we're good with that, definitely.
And, and, Andy, I just have another couple of questions, um, because I know that there's some residents that are, uh, watching this, and they, probably the issue of the impact fees floating up their head, they don't understand. Uh, to whom would this, um, this impact fee for the parks apply?
Sure, it, it would only apply to new home development, so if you're a longstanding resident, it has no impact. If you're renovating and doing something on your home, it would have no impact. Only new, from the ground up, single-family home construction would be, would be impacted, so to speak, by those impact fees.
So then?
Addresses. Is that, you address?
Okay, and, and then let me, let me ask this one last, uh, question. Um, so, as we drive through our roads every day, and there's new construction from ground up, these are potential homes that, um, could be, um, subject to the new impact fee, uh, every day?
It, it would only apply to homes that would come forward.
Right.
After, not, not the ones that are currently under construction, but anything that comes forward from the date that, that the impact fees are imposed, and, and passed by, ratified by council, it, it would apply from that day forward.
Close case, okay.
On, on the parks fee, which is the one we have, Russell and I talked about that, there may be a way to, to, to look at changing that dollar amount sooner rather than later. On the other fees, we do need to do a study, uh, similar to the fire assessment study, because if we're gonna impose a fee, there's gotta be a rationale that, that, that's defensible. A- and so, we'll continue to look at what other municipalities are charging, what those costs are, what, what's fair and reasonable to impose, but, you know, right now, it's, it's only a revenue stream to the town that, that's slipping by us.
Every day.
And, and it shouldn't, quite honestly. Yes, sir.
Yes, to continue?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, you know, it was interesting, I don't recall specifically which developer, but one of the developers that was trying to develop the, uh, the church property kinda let it slip during one of the meetings, that one of the things they found so attractive about Southwest Ranches is, we have no impact fees, it's cheaper for them to develop here.
We're about four hundred dollars and change on our parks fee, which is the only one that we have, which had been in place for, for probably twenty years. We are significantly less than other municipalities, and we'll, we'll bring all that documentation forward for you. I do have one other, one other item, Mayor, if I will, we had, I, I legal considered this more of a Scribner's error, but I did wanted to bring it to your attention all publicly. Uh, at the council meeting on May twenty-second, you all approved Resol- Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash oh-five-seven for eight-by-eight communications for the phone service for sixty-four thousand and change. We applied that to, uh, in, in budget, we applied it to, uh, object, uh, six-three-one-zero-zero. We're actually gonna split that between six-three-one-zero-zero and, and four-one-one-zero-zero, which is the telecommunications service, but the equipment purchase. Because the equipment purchase, in, in my opinion, is we're, we're just gonna budget it, show it a little bit differently within the budget, we're not changing the dollar amount in any way, shape, or form, so it, it's, but it was, uh, recorded that way on, on that resolution. We, purchasing spoke to legal, and legal considered that more of a Scribner's error, but they felt it important that we get it on the record in the public meeting and share that with you.
Just a question over to, uh, Emily, so are we reclassifying, so one's going to an asset and one's going to a service part of it?
Uh, pretty much, yes. Essentially, it happens that, uh, once we got the information, we realized that there's a portion of that that is going directly to an expenditure that are an asset.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Um, I do wanna, I'm a little bit out of order here. Um, I got handed this letter just before the meeting, so I was just trying to read it, actually. As the meeting was going, which normally I don't like to do, I like to pay attention. But, um, uh, I got a letter here from the Zamora family, and, uh, relatively new residents, they had, um, moved from a neighboring town into the ranches, and, um, had some, uh, work that needed to be done, and some issues, uh, um, getting that done. And they came to, um, the town for assistance, and, um, they were super happy with all the ways that the town, um, was able to meet with them, was able to smooth out and work with them to get things to come together and make their, their dream home come true. And, um, it's just awesome, they've got, uh, uh, you know, they've got, I've got half our staff listed here, but they listed them all name by name, and it's just awesome. A nice handwritten letter to show that they, you know, um, it's just a low-form letter, this came from the heart. And, um, staff, all of you, you do an amazing job, and, uh, we are so thankful for all that, all the staff that, all that the staff does, that, uh, that a lot of times we take for granted, but we have an awesome staff, and, and thank you all. And thank you to the Zamoras for recognizing that and, and writing that letter, thank you. Alright, um, item number nine, if we can, uh. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an extension to the agreement with Florida Technical Consultants LLC for continuing GIS consulting services under the original terms and conditions as approved via Resolution Two Thousand Nineteen dash zero-one-six, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to issue a purchase order and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Is there any, uh, comment on this item?
Hang on, hang on a second.
Over comment or us?
Yours.
Okay. Um, I'm looking for it, uh, on the document, but I had a question about this. I, I understood this to be, um, exclusively GIS technical services, correct?
That's correct.
There's something in here regarding, I think it's in section one dot two, just from memory, uh, about how they're responsible to clean up the, the project and all sorts of things. It seems like language may have filtered in from a, uh, you know, an RFP for construction services or something along those lines. I'm sorry, I just got the, uh, diversion on my, my piece, my, uh, tablet here.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Harbin, I'm not sure where you're finding that, it may be, it's something that's buried in the DAVY resolution, which we, with which we've initially piggybacked back in Two Thousand Nineteen. Uh, but that, that obviously is DAVY language, and that agreement is DAVY language, so that's not our language. We've simply piggybacked off of the DAVY agreement back in Two Thousand Nineteen. Uh, FTC's been the purveyor of GIS services to the town since Two Thousand Nineteen, we've been very happy with their service. We just wish to, uh, continue that service with them.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning the, uh, the suitability or any of the along those lines, it was just language in here that threw me.
How about I get that now? Let me open up to the public, and you can keep looking, maybe you will go there.
Perfect.
Um, any public comment on this? Yeah.
Uh, Noel Hall is with Hundred-Ninety-Ninth Avenue. What is the value of this contract that it's going to impact our budget? Uh, so what is the dollar amount? I never see this on the resolutions or ordinances anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Mayor, if you'd like me to address that? Um, we just, is there any others, public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed, yes, please. So, so within the warehouse clause, the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth warehouse clause, the estimated expense is twenty thousand dollars, of which the funding is earmarked from Topology Reserves, accrued from the imposition of billing program fees. So we have them not to exceed essentially twenty thousand dollars. If we spend less, then fine, but we will never spend more than twenty thousand dollars per annum for this service. Great, thank you. Thank you. Bob, any, uh, any luck?
I don't see it, but they're not gonna stop anything.
Okay.
It just seems super force, that's all.
Okay. Alright, any other comments? Seeing none, if we please call the roll. Councilmember Harbin? Yes, Councilmember Harbin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bakers?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you. Alright, item number ten. Item number ten is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement in the amount of two hundred twenty thousand dollars and zero cents with Kenley Horn and Associates Inc. to develop a town-wide stormwater master plan, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date. Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion in second, is there any council comment on this item?
I do have a question.
Presentation.
Okay. Hold on, wait, let's hear the presentation first, or do you want to have a comment first?
No, I, I just have a question, though.
Yeah.
We're ran it two hundred and fifty thousand, and this is for?
Two-twenty.
Two-twenty, what, what, what happens to the other thirty?
I actually asked Andy the exact same question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ron.
Good evening, council, so we're finally, we're finally here, uh, through the, through the hard work of a lot of people, staff, administration, everybody. Um, we've been trying to get a townwide stormwater master plan for a very long time. So, in, in doing so, I'd like to introduce Stefano Viola, who's with Kenley Horn and Associates. I've known Stefano for a very long time, we've, uh, used to work together, um, and you, you're in really good hands. He's a very good engineer, um, so he's gonna do the best for our town, I, I feel very confident.
Awesome, thank you, Ron.
Is the presentation, I do not see a clicker, so I guess I just say next slide?
I guess that'll work.
Alright.
You're in Southwest Ranches, a little uptown.
There we go. So you wanna grab it, or you're gonna do it? Your call, either way. Okay. Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Um good evening. I appreciate this opportunity. We're truly excited to provide the stormwater master plan for the town. Kimmy Horn, we are one of your on-call consultants and I'm the project manager for the on-call contract, and I will be the project manager for this stormwater master plan. In case you don't know the history about Kimmy Horn, our office is about fifteen minutes away from the town in Plantation, over at the corner of Pine Island and Peters Road. Um we have eighty, a little over eighty staff with interns this summer in our Broward County office alone, and we have forty, been located in Broward County for over forty years. Um ranking wise, nationwide, we're top ten for storm sewers. The storm sewers is the way nation, the nation, national nomenclature for surface water or storm waters, we call it in South Florida. So our experience in South Florida as it relates to stormwater master plans, this is just a snippet of our experience in South Florida. So starting from Orlando kinda down, we've done stormwater master plans within Miami-Dade and Palm Beach County, Miami-Dade, Broward and Palm Beach County, as well as stormwater master permits for like for our FXC or for Margate, things of that nature, as well as stormwater master plans. So here's a few examples, and more of this is leading to projects I've actually worked on, so this is not not leaning on Kimmy Horn, even though we do have the depth of resources, this is personal experience. We've done stormwater master plans for the Town of Cutler Bay when they incorporated, and we're currently doing their update. We've done stormwater master plan for the Town of Medley, which we finished in two thousand eighteen. The Town of Miami Lakes, we did their incorporation master plan and have since done three stormwater master plan updates, the most recent in two thousand nineteen, which they seek geo bond funding to implement everything that was identified in the stormwater master plan, which we are currently designing for them. And then the Village of Palmetto Bay, again, incorporation, we did their stormwater master plan, and we just completed last update um two thousand twenty. And we're currently working on the City of Lighthouse Point's stormwater master plan update. We did not do the original. The original was done about twenty years ago, and we are doing an update. And that's not a nomenclature, as they call it, update. It's gonna be pretty much a brand new study because of the age of the previous study. So I'll go over kind of a high level of what our stormwater master plan entails. First, we're gonna start with data collection. The way we, Kimmy Horn, do a stormwater master plan is we're gonna identify the areas. We're gonna wanna meet the residents, understand where the flooding is occurring, but then on top of that, we send our staff out to truth it. Meaning somebody's opinion of flooding may not be the same as another, and we kinda wanna standardize what flooding is so that we are addressing everybody's concern, but fairly across the board. So we've come to find out somebody may consider this flooding, and we go out there and it's maybe half of what that is. So this will become a higher priority. Not that they're not there flooding, but we wanna make sure we address the higher issues first and then work our way down to the lower level. So that's kind of the reason of truthing it. We have models, and the models will dictate the flooding, but we've learned in South Florida it's better to actually see it. So we will model it and we will truth it. So that's part of ours, and it's a little bit different than some other consulting firms. We are gonna truth everything before we kind of finalize this. And then as we work through, we'll put together a CIP, and we're gonna work with staff. Staff's been great so far, but we're gonna figure out what the best CIP number, meaning five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, five is never gonna happen, but just to be clear, we're gonna have a CIP that we can actually budget every year, that the town can then identify the funds and then we're planning out accordingly to institute um to suit all the improvements that we identify in the master plan. So another part of the document that's important to us, you can go to the next one also, is that we've identified, when we do these stormwater master plans for municipalities, it's an important document to seek additional funding for the improvements that we identify in the stormwater master plan. So we'll look at water quality, water quantity, level of service, and these are important aspects when you submit to any grant agency for funding for your stormwater improvements. So we always get pulled back in when municipalities such as Palmetto Bay, two weeks, two weeks ago, someone emailed, you submitted for a grant for this, can you provide us this information? We'll turn around and give them that information so they can kind of, cause while our master plans cater, every agency wants to provide funding. They may have some specific nuances that we can always pull with the documents. So that's an important part. So we use the most up-to-date stormwater modeling. So normally, we've done this in Cascade, which is South Florida Water Management District's preferred software, but we've now changed to go to ICPR four, which has become the more adopted software. And I know some of this is getting a little into the weeds for you guys, but it is the adopted software for the state of Florida. DOT recognizes as their preferred stormwater modeling, and so that's what we are currently using, ICPR four.
And at this point, questions?
I just got a couple of um just personal feelings that, you know, I, with regarding stormwater um stormwater issues on the east part of the town that's west seventy-five, I find it very frustrating to me to know that Pembroke Pines' base water level is higher than ours. So the water flows north through us, and that's very frustrating. And we had um tropical storm, was it Iota?
Ada.
Ada.
Last year, two years ago.
Yes, sir.
Ada. That was a big problem. And the water was flowing from Pembroke Pines through us to go to the C eleven. You know, it was very frustrating to a lot of neighbors. Um so that's one of the issues. And then the other one is reach out to our homeowners associations. Uh we got one president over here, Labor Heen, Debbie. Uh her meeting is on August first, and um it's Grace Baptist, Grace Baptist Church. And um we need a lot of the residents there if you want resident input. It's a good place to go.
We definitely want a resident input.
Yeah, there's another piece too, just to add on to David. We have a drainage committee in town. I think we've all served on it at one point or another, and they're a very good source, I mean Rod's the expert, but they're a good source of institutional knowledge for the town. Most of us have lived out here twenty plus years, and we've been through those five hundred year floods so far.
They've become more prevalent than five hundred years, but yes.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, appreciated. Uh we've been waiting a long time for this. Um as Bob mentioned, uh much of us have been on the drainage committee, and we talked about this literally twenty years ago, trying to do this, literally twenty years ago. And so it's awesome to see it all come together. Um Gary, and 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 Andy, I'll let you jump in if I mess it up, but basically what I I asked the same question you asked, and um it's actually good to have a little bit of a buffer there in case something goes over, but otherwise, we just don't, we just don't spend that money.
But so do we get the two, the full two fifty or?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we get what we spent, right? I I think what we get when we spend, but in s- in some cases, some of these awards will allow an administrative fee, and and if it does, in that case, we we would certainly do so.
You know, I'm thinking like we we do that national uh pollutant discharge study every year, maybe we can apply it to that or some, something to that effect. I mean, just thinking outside the box, you know? Cause that's usually.
I I I think funding on this was very specific for this project.
Oh, okay, all right. Just thought I'd ask.
Great. All right, any other questions? I think we're good. We're looking forward to the work getting started and appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Rod.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a real quick, obviously Stefano just gave a really broad overview of of the master plan itself, but one of the things that we're really excited also about is the ability to have conceptual level information on the plan that we could uh use uh on a permitting side. So when developments come in, we could now ask certain developments that are coming in to actually put some of those improvements in so we don't have to pay for them. We have that that um flexibility and availability here on the east side with the Central Broward Consortium. So having this townwide system now as development comes in, and once we adopt it formally into, you know, and we codify uh accept it, then what we can do is ask for those improvements as developments come in, so we don't have to come out of pocket and the residents then sort of.
Fantastic. Good. Yeah, excellent.
If I can.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I wanna thank Rod. Thank you. You you're you're definitely uh an asset. You're you're definitely good for us. Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Rod.
All right, I think we're good. Ready for the? Oh, public, sorry. Any public comment, Noel?
Noel Hall is with one hundred ninety-ninth Avenue. Couple of questions. What is the information, the maps, everything that the Drainage Board for twenty years have developed going to be delivered to him and his company for them to use? Because a lot of data is on that, the direction of the water flows and everything else and where the hotspots are, or where still are, et cetera, et cetera. And then I'm looking on page six, if you wanna bring that back up, where it says stormwater master plans. Then at the bottom, it has table twenty-nine, Drainage Sumbasin sixty-one pollution loading analysis. We have been cited by the Drainage District, and we've had a contract with them, which was every year, but has been renewed, and I've seen in the budget every year, where our water is tested coming into our town and going out of our town. And while it may be going out of our town at fifteen point six two, and it is a reduction of fourteen point four seven, we do not contribute fifteen point six two of the load. Pembroke Pines produces most of it, except for a couple of hotspots, which were some of the nurseries that over fertilized their plants, and then when the rains came, water drained off their property into the canals, and those were cited and taken care of. And it is my understanding that still is an ongoing process. So I'm looking at that, we must reduce it fourteen point four seven, and I disagree with that one hundred percent.
Is this an example or is this actuals?
It says Drainage Sumbasin sixty-one.
Is this an example of what they'll provide us? This isn't our stuff.
Well, I would think that they would put da- drainage data for our area in the thing. And if it's not us, then why is it there?
Just as an example. That's all right. That's all right.
I think they should use a correct example. So if that is the case, if this is all an example, we do not have the load that we're, that is being said, but Pembroke Pines has been giving us most of that load. The other problem we have on the drainage is the overload from Pembroke Pines into our town of water during the, during the rain events.
Yep.
And we don't, we go by gravity, not by pumps, and that is our case.
Mostly, yeah.
Also, the Drainage Board is a very integral part of our town, and I wanna make sure that they are going to be in complete, um shall we say, full disclosure.
In the loop.
With them on a continuous monthly basis, on a full report of what they've done, where they're at, what's what's happening. Also, I'd like to know when the uh, going to have some workshops for the public to come out and give them their two cents. It's because it's been a long time coming, and there's a lot of pent up situations where the town has made mistakes, the Drainage District has made mistakes, and the residents have suffered for many, many years with these mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Rod. Just if I may, just to clear some of that stuff up.
Yeah.
Um a hundred percent, absolutely, uh the Drainage Board will be involved, and uh we're we're all excited to get started. But obviously, this is the first step. We need to get it approved first. Obviously, once they get approved, they can expend the the dollars and the funds and start working.
Right.
Get the due diligence and all the information necessary. So everybody will be involved. We'll schedule meetings, public meetings with you guys. I'm I'm sure I'll work with the consultant, we'll do public um presentations for the um Drainage Board. So all that's gonna be taken care of.
Fantastic. Thank you, Rod. Anybody, other public comment? I thought I saw Joe or, no? Okay, we're good. All right, public comment closed. Yeah, councilman.
We raised a kind of important point that I I kinda raised a a flag with me, that if the stormwater drainage dumping into our town, for lack of a better word, is contaminating pollutants, why should our town be their drainage swamp?
Yeah, and why why should we be cleaning up their stormwater? You know, it it, I I mean, I don't know if you're into that debate, but when the drainage, the drainage is is a a system that is much larger than Southwest Ranches. And uh and everybody has to do their part, I guess, is how I would sum it up in two sentences.
Now's our seventy-five.
Yeah, so.
You're drafting passes through.
All right. Uh I think we're ready for the vote. I hope we're ready for the vote. Councilmember Harbin?
Yes.
Councilmember Harbin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bykers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, item number eleven. Item number eleven is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a neighborhood beautification grant award in the amount of three thousand dollars and zero cents to the Country Estates Civic Association, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Call for Bob. So I don't know, you're gonna do, make a motion?
Oh, sorry, yes. I make a motion to uh uh.
Approve.
Caught me off guard. Motion to approve.
Second.
Don't you wanna me to explain it?
No.
That was weird. I did. All right, uh any any comment from the council on this? Um I'll I'll just wanna make a couple of comments uh to say that um I'm excited about this. You know, we started these grants a while back. Um uh and I'm I'm pleased that I was involved in that. And um it's awesome to see the different uh civic associations and HOAs in our town taking advantage of this, and it's really a way of of saying, hey, you guys are right there on the front line of what needs to be done in our community. Here's some funds, you know, we trust you, let's let's do it together. And and it's awesome to see the different projects. I know there's others that are coming in. Um it's awesome to see the other, that these projects that come in and the way that uh the HOAs and civic associations are using them to better our town. So and it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of effort. Um you know, Bob has invested a lot of effort, but uh um you know, the um the HOA spent a lot of time on this. Debbie has spent a lot of time on this, and all the officers have spent a lot of time on this. So um it's awesome to see it all come together, and I'm excited for it. So um any public comment on it? Debbie, wanna say a few words?
Hi, yes. We're just, we're very happy that it's come before you. Um I can't thank Emily enough for all of her help and assistance through this whole application process and her patience. And also um the Weekly Family, cause they're, they're also, they are donating or volunteering their in-kind services. We have several of them in, that live in country estates. So and without that, we may not have, even with the town's grant, been able to do this.
Right.
So thank you to the the Weeklys and yes, to Bob. We're so lucky to have someone that's artistic and good with the computer and all of that stuff. And yes, our whole, the whole HOA, all the members, all the time that we put towards it. I know it's something we've wanted to add to, when you're driving out west, for it to look the same way as all the signs you see getting out there. So we're just excited to get this going, and on behalf of the board and all of our members, we hope this comes to fruition tonight, and um we look forward to working with the staff as well then in regards to the whole process of getting the signs. And and I don't know if you, I didn't see the sign was part of your packet, so I wasn't sure if you all had seen the the design. So when we did start talking about this, we we made sure that we were following the rural arts and designs boards, their recommended designs. And so this is what we came up with.
Looks beautiful.
So it kind of resembles kind of like our, the town signs, but they're not wood. They'll be aluminum with um the top die cut.
Perfect. Yeah, good. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I think they'll be good. They'll, they're durable. Um they certainly look a lot more like Southwest Ranches than the blue signs that are out there today. So um yeah.
And one more thank you. And thanks to Jim Lasky, who's donating all the, like the nuts and bolts.
Oh, awesome. Awesome. Great, great. Yeah, thank you, Jim. Absolutely. Thanks. I appreciate that. And also, thanks once again out to the Weekly Family, the uh really nice event to partner with us on this. So awesome.
I know there's a whole more of those blue signs is down.
Yeah, I just want, I I just wanna make mention that um I know it's been said, but I don't think the emphasis was put on it enough, to be honest with you. Um Bob spent countless hours designing this, going through several maybe uh versions of it before it was finally settled, and he put all that on its own time. It's not, you know, it's it's all volunteer. And all of us do similar things, but he needs to sp- I think he gets to get a special shout out for that.
Thank you. Great job. Any way I can help. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Awesome. Awesome. Fantastic. All right, um all right, I think we're ready for some more public comment.
Noel Hall is with one hundred ninety-ninth Avenue again. Couple of uh thoughts. Um the blue signs were put up by the county and therefore they're county property. Yeah. They were put up by the county, and so therefore they're county property, and we have been told in the past that they were county property. And when a new sign was placed, you had to either get county permission to put it where the old sign was, or you had to put it in on town right of way. Therefore, there was a couple of signs that were made in the past, which were put way in on town right of way because there's that large easement out west for the future road widening of Griffin Road. Now, are we going to? Now, are we going to ask the county, can we place the sign, the blue sign that is there on one ninety-ninth with the new sign? Or are we going to put it in front of someone's house down on the town right-of-way, on one ninety-ninth? Which is approximately fifty yards in. Uh, my question to the town is this, have you considered that? Have you taken that into effect? Because I believe you have to ask the county to put anything on county right-of-way, and that is county road right-of-way. All the way in on one eighty-nine, one ninety-ninth, one ninety-eighth, one ninety-sixth, right there. And, uh, just a question?
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed.
Um, I will say on those signs that, uh, as president of the HOA, when I was president there, um, and I know we didn't replace all the signs, but we replaced a ton of the signs, a vast majority of the signs, and, um, we did not replace, we did not change the placement of them, there was no change to where they were located, there was a sign, one sign replaced with another sign, and so we just, we just proceeded with it, and there was no issues with it, so I think we're fine.
Alright, um, if we can please call the roll.
Councilman Bob?
Yes.
Councilman Hartman?
Yes.
Councilman Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bike Cruise?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very good, alright, um, item number twelve. This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents with her homes to amend the Green Meadows Drainage Improvement Project, authorizing the execution of the purchase order, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two town budget, and providing an effective date. Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in second on this item, is there any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed, if we can please call the roll.
Councilman Bob?
Yes.
Councilman Hartman?
Yes.
Councilman Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bike Cruise?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very good, item number thirteen, please. This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of Allstate Resource Management as the lowest-priced, most responsive and responsible proposer for the rolling oats passive open space park pond cleanup project. Say that three times fast. Approving an agreement with Allstate Resource Management, which establishes the scope and compensation in the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and zero cents for its services to provide rolling oats passive open space park pond cleanup services to the town. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any council comment on this item?
Yeah, let me spend a couple of minutes on this, actually. Um, December and I have been talking about this, actually, for a couple of years. There were original proposals of going in with hydro mulching equipment and basically just mowing down everything and leaving two swimming holes, essentially, at the park. I don't think anybody thought that was the best idea. Um, as well, people might not be aware of how much basically wildlife live in those areas. So December and I probably started talking about this in more detail earlier in this budget year, and she came up with some excellent ideas, we were batting them back and forth, just to, to kind of validate and sanity, you know, sanity check what she was talking about, but instead of going in and just clearing the area, uh, and really removing habitat, the game plan, and she can go into far more detail than I can, maybe she wants to explain it, it's, this is more of a selective process. Let's go in and remove the invasives, and leave things like cypress trees behind, there, there's a lot of good plants in there that, you know, we, we attract birds in our parks that you don't see in your backyard, because of the, the environment that, uh, we've left behind for them. So this is a far less destructive approach to cleaning up the two ponds over at the barn, to make them more usable by our residents, and as well, uh, more beautiful, for sure, and probably improve the habitat for the wild animals as well, so.
Very good, thank you, December, I appreciate it.
Do you wanna add to that at all, December, I mean, I'm, I'm doing it at the hundred and fifty thousand foot level.
Great, great. She said she's excited to do the proj- project, but happy to answer any questions, for those on YouTube.
Yeah, but, um, one thing, uh, one item of note is, all of this is coming out, this is non-taxpayer funded.
Great point.
And so, that should be, you know, mentioned, you know?
Yeah, did I, did I mention earlier that we have a great staff here at, uh, the town, you know?
Second.
I mean, how many, how many, just about every one of these items that comes up here is attributed, uh, in part to staff members' hard work, um, you know, December, we've mentioned, Rod, we've mentioned, Emily, we've mentioned, and
Russell?
The, uh, Russell, you know, we've, we're different, so it's, we, we, yeah, we are truly fortunate here to have the staff we have, and, um, and, and, and Julio back there, I don't, you know, he takes, he takes a lot of heat, but he does an awesome job too, so, um, we really are fortunate to have the folks that we have here.
Just can't say it enough.
Yeah, can't say it enough, exactly.
Thank you for Leo, thank you.
We got a good team.
We do, we do.
If we can please call the roll.
Yes. Councilman Hartman?
Yes.
Councilman Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bike Cruise?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gary, it's good to have you back, you know, huh?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to reconvene the meeting.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion second to reconvene, we are reconvening the meeting, um, we have an item that administration has brought to us, Andy, if you could please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and I apologize for the disruption, but there's just one more thing I wanted to bring before you. Uh, at the next comprehensive plan board meeting, which is a week from tonight, prior to the next council meeting, there's an item on their agenda for rural residential agricultural ordinance discussion. And it has been pointed out to me by a resident that although you're all aware of this, council has not given formal, formal direction for the comp plan board to discuss that item, and I'd like to ask for your consensus now to move that forward.
I'd like to, uh, move that item forward.
A second that.
Yep.
Yes. Absolutely.
Do you need a motion consensus?
The cons- consensus is fine.
I'm on board, Jim, are you okay?
Yeah, we move it to the comp board?
Yes, thank you, yes, alright, so, we got consensus.
Thank you, man.
Alright, alright.
Motion to adjourn again?
Please, thank you.
Pretty good this time?